Good evening. We called board of the regular meeting, West Valley City Council. Our study meeting went over just a little bit as we were following up on some citizen requested items. Some of which we're going to work on and others which may be delayed a little bit. We have a strategic plan meeting we'll work on, but let's get into our meeting here. We note that all council members are present. And with that then, we'll turn to Councilmember Steve Vincent for our opening ceremony.
Yes, could you stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long scout troops, no other elected officials. Okay, so we go into our minutes of December 12th. A motion from the council. Assuming you want to approve. Move to approve the minutes of December 12th. Proceed before us. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to our award for the Utah Cultural Celebration Center basement renovation. Councilman Christensen, we'll turn to you for that.
Recently, Engineering News Record, it's a trade magazine for the Mountain States, awarded an award to the Utah Cultural Celebration Center for the Best Interior Tenant Improvement Project Award. And what they wrote up, I would like to read. It says that Engineering News Record, Mountain States, a leading construction industry magazine, recently awarded the 2017 Best Interior Tenant Improvement Project to the Utah Cultural Celebration Center renovation project. Both Leighton Construction and EDA Architects were recognized as the general contractor and architect, respectively, on this successful project. For the city, Jake Arselenian deserves praise for his vital role as project manager. Jake led the team, coordinating work between contractors, architects, and the UCC staff. As usual, Jake was on top of every detail and key to resolving issues quickly and efficiently. The facilities division staff pitched in wherever needed to keep costs down and the project moving along. The UCC staff also did an excellent job working around the construction as the building remained open and operating throughout the project. Following our excerpts from the article in the October 23rd, 2017 edition of ENR Mountain States. And these are quotes, "The project converted an unfinished plaza into high-end conference rooms and other attractive public spaces. The design includes exposed ceilings, wood plank accents, a floating staircase, and a new elevator shaft. In addition to a glass-walled executive conference room, the meeting rooms feature high ceilings and multiple partitions to break the space into different sizes. A centrally controlled audiovisual system includes a touchscreen panel for each room, which makes it easy for people renting the spaces to offer high-tech presentations. LED lighting ensures energy conservation, and a sophisticated catering kitchen allows multiple caterers to use it at the same time for different functions." Originally constructed in 2003, the UCC was designed to highlight the cultural diversity of West Valley City and bring the community closer together. The elegant new space helps the center fulfill its mission, a place to share ideas, inspire, nurture, and nurture and learn from one another, and enjoy arts, culture, concerts, and the performing arts, all under one roof. Thanks go to Jake Arselenian and all others involved in this award-winning project." And I've got, as I stand up, I'm going to open this award, which is about two feet by three feet, it looks like to me. So, congratulations Jake.
Okay, we go to public comment and we're trying to figure out exactly where's the right place, but this is our last meeting of the year. And there will be, in the new year, the next time we meet, we will have a new council member in place who will be taking a position that Steve Vincent will no longer be here. And if this is the right time, Mr. Vincent, we'd like to give you the mic for some public comment.
I thought I'd wait till city council comments.
Okay, I'll do it then. I wanted you to be first, though, but I'll do it then. With that then, we do have three public items, members here, from the public to speak. We begin with Kelly Bertosch, and so, for those who are not aware, it's a limit of five minutes. I think our clock works.
In his honor, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Kelly Bertosch, 5954, last design a circle. You know, instead of complaining, you know, I want to say thank you for all the stuff that you guys have done. In this last year of me getting involved here, I've seen you take care of a lot of little things, and I've gained a whole lot of friends. Mr. Vincent, thank you for your service that you've done. May you enjoy the rest of your time off. My comments again, and I'm sure Mrs. Lane just told me that I could have been to the meetings and listed all the things I talk about. I didn't realize it's open to the public, so I learn something every day. Again, I hope that you was able to look at that design of the traffic on the Lowe's Smiths, the way that you can only go to the exit at the Home Depot or the Lowe's store instead of Smith's to return east on 4100. They took the other side, just put a barricade or a concrete thing out there for no turning. Has forced everybody over to Lowe's, which has made a very long wait sometimes to be able to turn west. My one complaint I've had all the time and bringing up is parking on the streets. The other day, I think it was Thursday, I just had a car holler on the back of my truck, and I literally had to stop because I couldn't make it between a couple homes with the traffic being parked double side. It's horrible. And with the winter, I wish the officers would go out there and ticket them or do whatever it takes to get the snow off the roads. It's really a public safety, as I've always said. We couldn't get the fire truck down there some days if we needed to. So it is a public safety concern. On your agenda last week, on that subdivision, I hope you've been able to take a look at that and do more study on the traffic light on 3500 South, 6000 West. Due to the subdivision that's going to be put in up there by the Frito-Lay, it's going to put a lot more traffic there, and it's already tremendous to be able to turn. It's a horrible setup right there. One thing I'd like to see, and I know that being working in the government and purchasing through 20 plus years, if there's any of that air rainy day fond left before you got to get rid of it, I'm sure you got rid of it a little bit, please look at the public services for safety for our fire department, police department. That's the first thing we always cut usually is public safety, and that's one of the most critical things we need to have. Hopefully we can look at supporting them. I know you got some more equipment for the fire department, and thank you for doing that. Excuse me, my voice is a little loud. But hopefully, next year, you'll be able to put more on your budgets for them. It's a real good service to have that public safety there if need be. One thing that we done last week that I was really impressed with is the Spanish speaking to learn English. That's a great program. The only thing I told the instructors, teach them how to say the pledge of allegiance, because I didn't see anyone saying that. It's a great program. I hope we can consider pushing that more harder in our city to get English language spoken. And again, thank you for what you've done for my area. Anyway, I appreciate it. It's been a great year working with you. So, you guys all have a Merry Christmas and New Years, and we'll see you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Madsen.
David Madsen, 6902 West, 4060 South. Mayor and council, I come here tonight representing several groups. First off, just representing a resident here in the city in the fourth district. Also, I'm the community council chairman at Orchard Elementary and a community organizer, I call myself, with Neighborhood Watch in our area of Falcon Crest. And also a scout leader and a district scout leader as well. I wanted to come tonight and publicly thank Councilman Vincent for lots of assistance over the years. I'm prone to really appreciate the friendship we have and the assistance he's provided to us in all of those areas, and just to highlight a couple things. He was instrumental in helping us get a park built that was promised many, many years ago. That's quite a jewel in our neighborhood, and we're, as the new development of Ivory Homes Park Vista's come in, they've really appreciated having that there, but we really view that as a great addition to our neighborhood. The kids are always down there, and it's great that there's a place for them. At Orchard Elementary, just recently, we've had a traffic issue that's been taken care of with great assistance from the city. And Steve was a link to and represented us with you in getting that project done. And it's a safe area now, and traffic flows much better, and we're glad that that's in place before the snow's been flying now. Last thing I just wanted to highlight also is the assistance with our scout camp that's happened in the city limits. And if any of you hadn't had a chance to go see it when we had it there, it was great to be over in the USANA parking lot, overflow area. And it was great that the city assisted us in being able to host over there, and it was a great venue for us, even though it's just kind of a pile of dirt and mounds and gravel and stuff. It was perfect for a winter camp. The scouts made a great venue of it. And I just, again, want to express my appreciation for the service and representation that Councilman Vincent has given us in our area of the city. And excited the outcome of the election, but I believe in the elections, and again, wanted to thank him for all of that. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, especially Councilman Vincent.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think it's Cross, is John Cross?
John Cross, yes.
Okay. Not quite sure there.
Who knows what I even wrote there? Mayor, Councilman, Madam, Sir, my name's John Cross, 2545 South, 3560 West. I had a whole list of complaints last time. We seemed to, I don't know if a phone call was made, if, what has happened, but it has mellowed. I also wanted to thank Mr. Willardson, can you hear me now? For all his help in getting the sidewalks leveled and taking care of the street signs for me. So we talked last time about the trucks idling. That seems to have mellowed. Our beeping seems to have mellowed also. What I have noticed is the trucks that are getting ready to leave at 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. What they do is they'll start to idle at about 4:00 or 5:00. And so that's where the rumbling comes in. Now, the option that I basically have come up with is a buffer space. Kind of like maybe a higher sound wall or possibly oil eaters for the trucks so they don't have to idle quite so long. That's about the only thing that I've come up with all that. Very often, we have alarms going off in these empty warehouses, and they'll go off for two hours in the evenings. So, basically, what I've seen is, especially for Boar Long here, their property was not designed for what they bought it for, and they've kind of made the problem worse by putting the grindout material out where they park the vehicles. If they could change their diesels back and forth from where they have their regular pickup trucks, I think that would also be a help. And then, they cut through Vespa Drive. I think Google has it listed as a good cut through. It's also a nice way to get from Parkway Boulevard through to 3600 West and Missalite. So we have a lot of trucks coming through there, big heavy trucks. I had one a couple weekends ago, it got stuck in the bloody dead end. So couldn't get out, couldn't back up, cars on the road. So, that's really about all I have. It's still just the same old thing we talked about last time. And I'll go to that meeting next time and we'll find out what we talked about. So, thank you all, and have a good Christmas.
Thank you. For a note, for those of you who weren't at the meeting, there will be minutes available that people can see what was discussed. And sometimes, though we try our best, we may not get the complete issue. And so, look at that, and we'll have to add a couple of items from your comments today. Anyone else here for a public comment? Not seeing any, then we'll come back to the council. Our assistant city manager is here. Any comments from you, sir?
No, sir.
To the council then.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it was, it's going to be emotional for me. It was actually 18 years ago, I decided to get involved in city government, then appointed to the Board of Adjustments, and served as the chair of the Board of Adjustments for two years. And interesting enough at that time, met a very young city attorney in Nicole Cottle. And it's been fun to watch Nicole grow and become the powerhouse that she is. And then I decided to run for council when one of our city councilors decided to give up this seat in Janus Fisher. So I ran, and during these last 16 years, I've served with four mayors, two city managers, and 12 council members. It's been a pleasure. One of the things that, when I first ran, I wanted to make sure we did was to upgrade the housing stock in the city. I think that's been accomplished. And Karen Wayne was part of that at about the same time as she was on the planning commission and worked with us on those same issues. And over these 16 years, I've watched Mr. Pyle assemble a powerhouse team of administrators that have made relationships that have helped this city grow. It's only through those relationships that the projects that we've seen, like the city center project, projects on 5600 West, and projects around the Health Center Theater and those areas. Without that team that Wayne had put together, those things would never have happened. And I'm grateful to have been a part of that. And there were a lot of controversial decisions made when we started buying property for the city center, but I think they were the correct decisions, and it's been healthy for the city. And I'm proud to say that I've been a part of that. And just to that, council going forward, don't let this team be broken up. They've developed relationships that I don't know how we would move forward without them. This team is broken up, those relationships will go away, and development will dwindle. But thank you to all the staff and the council members and to the residents that I've really enjoyed working with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And although we stood and clapped that small compensation for the tremendous amount of time, service, and dedication that Mr. Vincent gave to this city, only those who have served recognize the impact it has. And although it's part-time, it affects work. You know, you have to take some of your vacation for things. It affects certainly people's careers to some degree. And then the amount of time, I know Steve Vincent has been involved in so many projects that we couldn't list them here, even just taking West Fest. And the amount of time that you put into that over the years has been significant. I don't know, almost as much as you put in here in these meetings at night, it seems like. So, we do appreciate those who serve, and they deserve our great thanks because it is not easy to make that type of sacrifice of time and effort and in careers and everything else. So, just on my behalf, I got to know Steve in a carpool, and he would update me on the city things, and I guess I should have paid more attention back then, but he was always telling me things that were going on and just a very dedicated public servant. So, just on my behalf, certainly thank you, and certainly on behalf of the citizens, all the citizens of West Valley, thank you for your service. Some other?
Thank you, Mayor. Some time ago, I decided to run for city council and joined a group of professionals that I appreciated and learned a lot from. And it's hard for me, as I look around, to believe that the only one left is Steve. I don't know what's happened. I haven't been here that long. But the dedication, the wisdom, the judgment, and the institutional knowledge that you brought to our meeting is going to be missed. You know, that's something that takes time to develop and takes time to replace. Also think that we ought to recognize Susan. It's not always easy having your spouse in the public eye and receiving public chastisement and criticism from time to time, and just having to kind of take that. And, you know, I understand the sacrifice that's made by a spouse and family in that position. They don't want to hear bad things said, and often without rebuttal, because that's just kind of par for the course here. So, as we go forward, which we will, with new elected officials, as is always the case, I think that it's just important to recognize those that have gone before. All of those who sat here with me when I started, Don came on the same time that I did, but we had some others who had quite a great deal of understanding, more than I did, as to how the city worked and how budgets worked and what was involved, and things that we're already committed to. And it's never a revolution here, it's just a continuation of good things. And certainly, the city has improved during Steve's tenure, and I expect that it will continue to improve, even in your absence, although it's going to be a little bit more difficult. But thank you for your service.
I'd like to add my personal thanks also, Steve. I didn't get to carpool with you, but I did talk to your wife very often at work, and she worked as one of my secretaries in one of the schools. And part of the reason that I decided to run for office was your example and your encouragement when I made the decision. So I'd like to thank you personally for your 16 years on the council and many years before, not only on the Board of Adjustment, but also helping in a few other places around the city, like in the Maverick Center parking lot, and a few other places where you don't get a whole lot of recognition. So, thank you for all what you've done, and my personal thanks for being an inspiration and a guide to me. Thank you.
I, when I became, actually, I was new in 2011. At that time, I didn't know what to do, to be honest with you. So I called Steve Vincent, and he was so kind. And very helpful, he came over to the administration near to City Hall here, and we went to the small room, the council room over there, and I asked him a lot of questions. I remember now, I asked him a lot of questions about the city, and I didn't know anything about it. But he was so kind to me, and I appreciate it very much. I don't know why I picked Steve Vincent at that time to ask those questions, but I think I believe, I trust the guy. So I asked him, over the years, I learned a lot from Steve Vincent. He was a new guy, so I have to learn a lot. I appreciate him very much, what he has done for me, and I appreciate it very much. Taught me, and, you know, happy to be a good council member. I just also want to say thank you to Susan, and I know there's a lot of things going on in the city and time we have to put, time and efforts in the city, and you sacrificed for your husband for that, and I appreciate it very much. And I just wish you the best, and thank you for everything you have done for me.
Can I say something on behalf of the staff? Yes, without objection from the council, we'll go to Assistant City Manager Paul Ising for some comment.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, you know, I know it's not necessarily my place, but I, on behalf of the staff and frankly, Mr. Pyle, and the fact that I've known Steve for many, many years myself in various capacities. And Steve, I just want you to know from my standpoint, and I think I can speak to the whole staff, how much we've appreciated your participation with us in trying to solve many of the city problems. You've always been willing to do that with us. And we honestly feel that you are a man of integrity and high ethical values, and we appreciate very much working with you and hope that we see that again. and hope that we see that again.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll go on to the rest of our lengthy agenda in honor of Mr. Vincent. It just happened to be short tonight. So, we have a public hearing scheduled. This is for application SV-2-2017 filed by the city to vacate portions of Gerard Street, Montrose Avenue, at approximately 2325 South, 2600 West. If you look at the document, it appears like there's a street that we're going to give up. Actually, we've already given up the other half. There is no street there, there's not going to be a street there. It was left on the maps of the county. In fact, it looks like there's all sorts of little plots around there and there are. So it's a business area where, you know, it's developed over the years. This is just a cleanup issue. However, it is one that we must bring before the public. With that introduction, then, I will open a public hearing on application SV-2-2017, which will be followed by the action we take, ordinance 17-39. Is there anyone here who is coming to speak to this issue? No one here to speak to this issue? Then I will close the public hearing portion of that and bring it back to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 1739.
Yes. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That's our regularly scheduled business. We do, before we adjourn, we're going to go to an executive or closed session immediately following this meeting. So, any final comments from the council? If not, I need a motion from the council to go to a closed session for the purpose of discussing character and professional competency of city employee, I think's the way we would term that. It falls under that category. So, and then, that we will adjourn immediately following that session with no further business or action, finished for the night. So move, Mayor.
Second.
Properly before us, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, we'll go into an executive session.[1778.26]